For those of you who are just coming on, we're waiting for all the participants to get patched into the call. People are still joining. Okay, the number of participants has stopped climbing, so I think everybody has been patched into the call. Good evening and welcome to our first ever Zoom board meeting. This is new for all of us, so thanks for your patience and for bearing with us. I would like to call to order the April 7th, 2020 Governing Board of Trustees Special Meeting at 5:01 PM. I will now take roll call of members who are present at this meeting. Member Fitzpatrick? Catherine, unmute to say present. You have to do it, yeah. There we go. Okay, member Mock?
Present.
Member Raffner?
Present.
Member Wooden?
Present.
And I am Erica Alburn, and I am present, so all governing board members are present. The Governor of California has declared a state of emergency to exist in California as a result of the threat of COVID-19, aka coronavirus. The Governor issued Executive Order N2520, which directs Californians to follow public health directives, including canceling large gatherings. The Executive Order also allows local legislative bodies to hold meetings via video conference, via conference and video calls, while still satisfying state transparency requirements. The Governor has also issued Executive Order N3320 prohibiting people from leaving their homes or places of residence except to access necessary supplies and services or to engage in specified critical infrastructure employment. The public's health and well-being are the top priority for the Delmar Union School District Governing Board of Trustees. And you are urged to take all appropriate health and safety precautions. To facilitate this process, the meeting of the governing board has been made available on the district's website. At a special meeting, only items listed on the agenda may be addressed in public comments. Members of the public who would like to address the governing board regarding closed session item 3.1 must go to the link provided at the online agenda, item 2.1, and complete and submit the online request to provide public input form. And Chris, could we show that if it's not already up on the screen? Once you've submitted the form, please click the raise hand function at the bottom of your Zoom screen on your computer, or if dialing in, dial 9, oh sorry, star 9 to raise your hand. This will let the moderator know that you have submitted a speaker form and would like to address the board. Do not click raise hand unless you plan to address the board and have completed the request form. This is last call for speaker slips. Please submit your request to provide public input form at the online link. I'm going to leave the link open for a few more minutes to make sure that anyone who wants to submit a request can submit it. And I believe Chris is showing us where item, yeah, if you click through from the homepage right there, it'll take you to board docs and you're going to look for item 2.1 where you'll see the link. Chris has a different view, so you may not be able to see his view exactly. Okay, so we are at item 2.1, "Call for Public Request to Address the Board Concerning Items on a Closed Session Agenda." By law and board policy, any member of the public may address the board on an item on the agenda, but the public must present a written request to the board. At this time, I will call for public request to address the board regarding the item on the closed session agenda. The meeting moderator will unmute the current speaker. Please state your name before speaking. You have three minutes to address the board, and you'll receive a 15-second warning. After the 15 seconds, your device will be muted and we'll move on to the next speaker. You'll see a countdown clock in front of you, so you'll know when your time is going to be up. And what I'll do, what I usually do is just call the name of the first person and the second, two people at a time, so that the next person knows to get ready. So the first person who will be speaking is Sandeep Patel. Sorry, let me go back. To item 1.2 is approval of the agenda. And then we'll do public comments. Okay, so I need a motion to approve the agenda, and it's going to be a roll call vote. Do you have a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll move to approve the agenda.
Thank you, Scott. Catherine, thank you for seconding. We'll do a roll call vote again. Member Fitzpatrick? Yes, to approve the agenda, yes or no?
Yes.
Mock?
Aye.
Member Raffner?
Aye.
Member Wooden?
Aye.
And I also vote to approve the agenda. So that is passed. Now we will begin with public comment, starting with Sandeep Patel, followed by Frank Stonebanks. And please raise your hand on your Zoom account so that we can find you. Thanks, everyone, for your patience, because Christmas has to load, load you in there.
Sorry, moved Sandeep up. I'm not seeing... We may have, ah, there he goes. I may have gotten back. Technical difficulty.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Thank you, board. My name is Sandeep Patel. We live close to and are strong supporters of the Delmar Hills Elementary School. I wanted to speak to the board today to thank you for your work for our children and emphasize the overwhelming support from our community on the Delmar Heights Elementary rebuild. The current rebuild plan represents a reasonable compromise in maintaining the vast majority of beautiful green space with the needs of building a school the modern code. I think one point all of us can agree on is the safety of our children's paramount. And as even the staunchest opponents of the school rebuild emphasize, wildfires represent a major risk to the children of the school, and the current situation with portables and outdated fire protection measures represents an unsustainable status quo in need of urgent attention. Attention that the current rebuild plan, both in scope and timeline, addresses extensively and to the benefit of our children. As we virtually congregate here in these challenging times, it is a reminder that we're all connected more so than any of us appreciate in our day-to-day lives. As unexpected as this meeting virtually today seemed months ago, equally unexpected was a law firm retained by a minority group for their own personal gain attempting to derail a robust democratic majority having supported the rebuild, having become involved. In utilizing the same firm that sued Cardiff School District, the goal for these people to financially capitalize on disruption of the district plan represents a clear financial conflict of interest that must be further investigated. And given the wildfire risk of the status quo, our children in the school represents a threat to our schoolchildren whom I hope the board to defend here and continue to do so. And while the legally well-connected and well-to-do can afford high-priced lawyers for their personal benefit under the guise of multiple shell corporations, our children and future generations of children who would attend Delmar Heights Elementary do not have that luxury. It is in that spirit that I want to thank the board for their work here. As if a frivolous challenge from a small number of deep-pocketed individuals utilizing a shell corporation is successful here, similar frivolous challenges will arise throughout the school district and progress throughout all the other schools will be equally jeopardized. The status quo is unsustainable, as all sides have already agreed upon, given the increasing risk of wildfires throughout children. And the only path forward is to proceed with the rebuild as planned and without delay. Indeed, the current school closure provides an opportunity to proceed with the rebuild as overwhelmingly voted for and with even less disruption to our children and the neighborhoods. We are going to have to rebuild Delmar Heights Elementary, and there's no choice on this front, and there's no time like the present. Thank you for your work in representing our schoolchildren who are unable to hire legal representation of their own, and thank you for the work that continues to defend them and allow them to thrive here. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll have Frank Stonebanks, followed by Anna West.
Can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you and good evening, dear board members. First, I want to thank each and every board member for their leadership, dedication, and commitment to our top priority, education and our kids. My name is Frank Stonebanks. I live in Delmar Heights, and I have two girls that attend the school, currently in fourth and first grade. I'm speaking tonight to express mine and my wife's support and the support of the Friends of Delmar Heights, a broad coalition of residents, taxpayers, teachers, former principals, PTA presidents, and most importantly, the children, for the current district plan for the new school to begin construction this June. This coalition came together and grew enormously when it became clear shadow forces were at work to halt the democratic process, the building of our new school. Despite the passing of measure amendment in November 2018 with a significant 61% margin, almost 12,000 votes, followed by a year and a half of district facilitated community input, hundreds of hours, and dozens of meetings with residents to collect input on design, it became clear of late that nothing was going to be enough to satisfy Save the Fields and Play Outside Delmar. It's very clear now, based on the 61-page report produced by Procopio and presented to the school board tonight, that shows Save the Fields has spared no expense in their efforts. This document, along with dozens of FOIA requests filed by Procopio for Save the Fields, likely represents hundreds of thousands of dollars in legal fees. How will they recoup them? Remarkable, for a not-for-profit that is supposedly focused on the size of the fields and kids. At least, that's what they told their supporters. This Procopio document mentions virtually nothing about field size or green space. Why? Because it's not a winning argument. Friends of Delmar Heights, on the other hand, has the following support: Former beloved principal of 30-plus years at Delmar Heights, Wendy Wardlow; all eight PTA presidents in the district representing every school; every teacher and all staff at Delmar Heights Elementary; a massive base of supporters, thousands of unique visitors to our website, and hundreds of letters of support that have already been sent to the school board. Of note, all our supporters live locally. On a personal note, kids were moved from a condemned classroom last year. It's still condemned. The roofs are leaking. Buckets are collecting rainwater. Rat feces are falling from the ceiling. A delay brought on by legal maneuvering intended solely to trip up the district in a gotcha kind of way regarding CEQA is really an affront to every decent resident with children who actually attend the school. Friends of Delmar Heights supports the kids and puts education first. We support the district's plan 100% and want to see work started on schedule in June. Delaying the build will compound existing problems resulting in millions of dollars going to attorneys and their plaintiffs, not schools and the kids. Make no mistake about it, this isn't about field size. Many were duped into believing and have now left Save the Fields and Play Outside Delmar in droves. No matter how many FOIA requests, legal documents, or actions that come from this law firm, nothing can stop local residents, parents, taxpayers, and most importantly, children, from rebuilding Delmar Heights now. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Anna West next, followed by Jesse Barrett.
Can you hear me?
Now I can hear you. Go ahead.
Great, thank you. Good afternoon to each of you, and thank you for taking the time to hear on this important topic of rebuilding a Heights school today, especially under the duress of the coronavirus and all the logistical challenges that presents our schools. My name is Anna West, and I have a current third grader at Delmar Heights and one incoming junior grader. I've not spoken in any of the board meetings because I like to listen first and respond once I've considered both sides of their arguments. Now that I've had time to put my thoughts together, I'd like to share them in an effort to show my support for the Delmar Heights School Rebuild Proposal as it stands. I'm happy the original school and layout over the past few decades served the community at large to enjoy its vast field and all of its activities it allows. However, it now comes at a price, and it keeps getting steeper as the population of children, this side of the five and in this district, and the site age increases. The school itself needs more room and thoughtful updates to the functionality of the infrastructure itself, and that takes space. Space for the families that attend the school first and foremost, and secondarily to the community that supports the MM bond. Thankfully, the district and our community has a large chunk of land in prestigious Delmar we can design to accommodate what current needs of today. Design compromises have been made, and have been made for the sake of the field and for the benefits of delay, and the benefits delaying any longer are just not there. As we all know, time is money, and to delay the work further would risk the time and money currently allocated to our schools through the bond measure, which would be very short-sighted. As it increases the time, our kids are in unsafe and unsuitable circumstances as the school currently stands. We've been involved in the process since the beginning. There were a lot of people in the planning meetings. The rooms were full, with a lot of community members in attendance that do not have current direct ties to the school. We prioritized views, onsite queuing, one-story buildings, safety, et cetera. Those priorities were added at the beginning of the design process as to not waste time after the fact, as is being done now with the opposition. I heard firsthand the design challenges and all of the priorities from both the community at large and the smaller but more directly actionable school community. The district and its architects listened. They refined. They presented a beautifully upgraded school that fits today's need for a school, not a community park. And I, for one, am thankful for the attention and design. The people who actually spend nearly every day there for years on end, teachers, staff, students, and the families, know what is needed more than the outlying community members. That is not an opinion. That is fact. Sure, there are still dissenting voices inside the school community, but it is a vast minority compared to those who support it. My point is, it will be impossible to have everyone love the new design. Compromises need to be made. We have an opportunity to create much-needed updates to the property, including a larger footprint to the school, as well as keeping a wonderful-sized field for all children to enjoy. Respectfully, I stand behind the design as it stands because I believe the architects have done just that, strike a balance. Extremism in either direction will not help us create the best functionality and space for the gem of a school site and ultimately best serve the children and families attending both now and in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Jesse Barrett, followed by Arzo Nasiri.
Can you hear me?
There we go. Yep.
Hello, my name is Jesse Barrett. I moved to Delmar in 1999. I have two children who attend Delmar Heights Elementary. And for those of you who attend the school, you might recognize me as one of the crossing guards who waves at everyone. Thank you to the board for all your hard work. Thank you to all the teachers and staff for your dedication to the work of educating our children. Thank you to all the parents who care about their kids' education. Thank you to the parents who get involved. Thank you to the parents who have opinions that are different from mine. Diversity of opinion is healthy. It is part of the process. And we've had the process. Did I get everything I wanted? No. But it is time to move forward for the benefit of all the current and future kids at this school and the taxpayers that live in the district. Hopefully, I am being a good example to my children and the children of others. What I didn't do is throw a temper tantrum. I didn't hire a law firm to drain funds away from children. Thank you, John Garten. Thank you for showing our children a great example of what not to do. Our children are watching. The parents of this district are watching. We, as a community, are better than this. We will rise to meet this challenge, and we will not quit. We will continue to live here. We will continue to take our children to this school. We will continue to care about and fight for our children's education, and we will not quit. Thank you.
Thank you. Arzo Nasiri, followed by Clayton Jeffrey.
Hi, can everyone hear me?
Yep, I can hear you.
Hi, everybody. Arzo Nasiri here. Hope you all are doing well under these unusual circumstances. I'm not going to repeat what the folks before me said because they said it so eloquently. I guess I just wanted to say, from, I try to think of myself being in the board's shoes and what you guys must be hearing and thinking. And I'll just let you know, from my point of view, I'm somebody with two kiddos at Delmar Heights, with one going to be joining there in a couple of years. But I just wanted to say that, you know, there was all of us who were thinking, this is pretty logical. Of course, this is going to move forward, so we were kind of quiet and didn't say too much. And I guess that was, that's our mistake and my mistake. I'll take the onerous for that because I really thought logic would prevail, and I'm still hoping it will. But I just wanted you guys to know, as the board, as you're sitting there going, poring over these immense legal documents, I perused some of them today, that you have this, our support. You have the support of people who are, the people who sent you emails, they are people with kids at the school. We're in this community. I live a stone's throw away from the school. And it's not, you know, these fake robot signatures from other, you know, other countries being sent to you guys. So I know you all are very intelligent and you see that, but I just wanted you to hear from us that we are here to support this plan. We believe in it. We know, I'm a big fan of civic engagement. I love it. And I don't even mind when people disagree with me. I love a spirited debate. But I was completely, it's not even enough to say disheartened, but I was disgusted when I found out the nefarious parties who are trying to profit off of our children and the bond money that we are all paying into this to provide our children with nice school that's not infested with rats, and they're trying to bleed that money dry from the children. And that really gets my blood boiling. So that's why I wanted to take this time just to say my piece, and I really thank you guys. I know you're doing a lot. And I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Our last speaker is Clayton Jeffrey.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, my name is Clayton Jeffrey. I moved to Delmar Heights roughly about three years ago. I as well have two kids that go to the school. I ride my bike up there every morning. I was a crossing guard quite often a couple of years ago. Part of the dad's club, know many of the moms and dads in the community and just love, love the area. And, you know, I moved to this area with my family specifically to put my kids in this Delmar Heights School District because it was a very esteemed school district. It had a lot of pride. The president was, or the principal was amazing. You know, in last, we lost her a couple of years ago. She resigned, but that didn't matter because the school remained amazing in all of its capacity. And so it just really is aggravating just to kind of re-chime in on what some other people have said to know that some of our money that we voted for, for the school, for the kids, is, you know, it's going to be wasted. It's going to be lost. We're going to have less money spent on the benefit of the kids because we now have to take any sort of lawsuit into account. And I don't know any of the legal details or ramifications of it. I just know that when you go to court, it costs money because you got to fight it, and money and bureaucracy at the end of the day leaves us, leaves us with not as good of a school. And that's just not our school. That's the whole school district, you know, if I'm understanding it correctly. Those bond measures were for everybody. There's money in there for everybody. So I really do thank the board and everybody that put their time and effort into understanding the, you know, to designing the, the school the way it is. I don't have enough details, but it seems to me like it's a darn good design. They took into account all those early people requests and everybody. It meets all the requirements of schoolteachers and whatnot. And for that, I just, I just want to see it move forward. I don't want us to be like other school districts where we now, where they have empty lots and/or delays. And/or to see my kid go back to a school that I now know has some severe deficiencies in the form of health standards and whatnot with rats and all these other things. So my sentiment is that we need to move forward with the plan we have. The community wants it, at least the majority of the people that I interact with and know. And I thank the board, and I hope that whatever vote needs to take place to move this in the right direction can happen. And with that, I yield the rest of my time, as they would say in Congress.
Thank you. One second. Okay. We do have a hand raised from Greg Heinzinger, but he doesn't have a form submitted, so we will continue. Thank you, everyone, for your comments. We are moving into item 2.2, adjournment into closed session. We will adjourn into closed session regarding item 3.1, Conference with Legal Counsel: Anticipated Litigation, Government Code Section 54956.9 D2 and 549569 E2, Two Cases. This relates to two letters that were received regarding allegations, alleged violations of the California Environmental Quality Act related to the proposed Delmar Heights rebuild project and the district's consideration of a mitigated negative declaration regarding that project. Links to copies of the two letters alleging the violations are posted on the online agenda, item 3.1. Okay, with that, we will adjourn into closed session. Okay. Hello, everybody. We're just waiting for a couple of attendees to reconvene to our webinar. Okay, we are reconvening into open session at 7:20 PM. That's item 4.1. Item 4.2 is Report of Action Taken in Closed Session. The board met in closed session and no action was taken. We are going to return, due to our technical difficulties earlier, we're going to return to item 2.1, which was the request to address the board. We did get an on-time request from Greg Heinzinger, but since the form wasn't working for him, he wasn't called previously. So we're going to go ahead and take his three minutes of public comment now on the record. So turning it over. There we go.
Oops, you just took over my screen.
Hi, Greg. We can hear you.
Okay, let me get what I was going to read. Okay. Thanks for doing that because, yeah, something went glitchy on the forum. So this is Greg Heinzinger. And he had a couple of different comments on that. I'll try not to repeat what other people said, I think quite eloquently about the rebuild. I would ask again that the board move forward on rebuilding Heights, even if this does require legal action. After reading the secret responses, it seems clear to me that no matter what reasonable design is pursued, there's going to be challenges. And I think the district's design is a reasonable compromise overall. And while I strongly support the school continuing to allow the grounds to be used for recreational purposes outside of school hours, the school's not responsible for providing parks to the area. It's true that there's a shortage of parks in the area. However, the city has not been willing to put funds behind addressing this. And I say this after having spent almost a decade on the local planning board. So while the Torrey Pines Community Planning Board, Community Plan- So while the Torrey Heights Community Planning Board, Community Plan may call for a desire to act, enact a joint use agreement with the district, this was never done. And I think one of the reasons it was never done was the city was never willing to provide compensation or contribute actually to this effort. Also, another point would be looking at the alternative design advocated by Play Outside. I believe it would present even greater secret issues due to its impact on Mira Montana's drive. It requires significant construction right near the residences. It'd eliminate the landscape buffering that's currently there and was in the new design, and it puts moving traffic right closer to the houses. It'd also be detrimental to the public views along Mira Montana. And in addition, I believe there are a number of practical issues with the alternative design that I believe make it not viable to actually implement. I have to sit here and wonder, Play Outside's, I look at Play Outside's secret comments, and I believe they mostly would apply to the design that they advocate. So I really kind of question whether they even believe that their design's flawed and why they're advocating a flawed design and yet providing all of these detailed legal comments on something that I think they, their own, you could read their own stuff saying is flawed. Further, when I look at these designs overall, and I'd say this is true for all the designs that have been considered, including what exists today, I think they all suffer from the same emergency and evacuation access issues. And this is really due to there being a single point of access on Cudero Road between Boquita and Mercado, including those two intersections. I do believe the improved parking and routing will improve things. I also believe that Heights probably needs to put an emergency traffic direction plan in place to more fully address this. With that, I thank you for taking the comments and for allowing that to be done in spite of the technical difficulties. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Greg, and thank you for your patience with us. This brings us to item 5.1, adjournment of the meeting. I need a motion to adjourn the meeting. Is there a motion?
I'll move to adjourn.
Thank you, GW. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Catherine. All those in favor? I'm sorry, roll call vote. Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
Mock?
Aye.
Raffner?
Aye.
Woodin?
Aye.
And Alburn is aye. The motion to adjourn the meeting is passed, and the meeting is adjourned at 7:24 PM. Thank you for joining us, and good night.
Thanks, good night.
Thank you. Aye.